It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this City of Monessin Council Meeting to Order is on October twelfth at six thirty. Please have a roll call, please.
Councilor Chakowski?
Here.
Councilperson Thomas?
Here.
Councilman Nestor?
Present.
Councilman Gregor? Mayor Moser?
Present.
Mayor, we note four members here, one absent, Councilman Gregor, but a form exists.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Councilman Thomas to lead us in prayer.
Goodbye, here's my moment of prayer. Father, we just thank you for this day, for allowing us to come together as one to the purpose of forwarding the city and for the good of the city. We pray that you bind us all together in one accord, that you grant us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to do what is best for the city and its residents. In Jesus' name we pray and thank you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to ask council members to, somebody to approve the minutes of the previous session. Make a motion.
Honorable mayor, motion to approve previous session's minutes for September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only.
Ernest Telegraphus, twenty-nine recs. On page three. What is this resolution for city council? For the program modification of two thousand and nineteen Community Development Block Grant. What's that all about?
That is the, as a result of the public hearings we held on the CDBG funds.
To the CBC, what? And now you're gonna, what? What are you gonna do? You're gonna just okay it?
Yes.
Okay, what are you gonna okay? You don't have it down here.
It should be part of the packet.
It's not anywhere. So you guys okay things that we don't even know what you're okaying?
It's in a packet. But isn't that when you talked last meeting about using what the leftover funds when you used to go to the kitchen at the city center?
Yes.
That's the one from the last meeting.
I know, but it's one thing for hearsay evidence, and one thing to be a black of mind.
It's in there.
I don't know, I looked back here, I didn't see any detail.
All right. I would've asked the same question when it came up, so.
Good, I'm glad we got somebody on board.
I wasn't sure what it was, so I just asked a question, that's all.
Yeah. It seems like you guys operate, now who is this guy on page two? That got a sweetheart deal for five hundred and thirty-nine dollars?
He's the one that won the bid at the city council, at the county.
How many people were there? Just one person? So he had nobody against him?
Any of the redevelopment, any of the repository properties that are on the list, and you can go to online and Google Westmoreland County redepository list, repository list. You can make an offer on those properties.
Do you know how many people made an offer on this property?
Only takes one.
So...
Anybody in the county is able to make those offers.
How many people knew about this? It could be online, but who knows, who looks at all the line?
Okay, that's fine. That's not my problem, that's the county's problem.
Well, it's your problem too.
No, it's not my problem.
You're voting on it.
I'm sorry?
You're voting on it. Okay, so if you're voting on it, you're part of the, you know, the connection.
I think about this, mayor, is if I may, it puts the property on, on the tax line. You're now getting more income than you wouldn't for a property sitting there.
Yeah, how much income? You're making statements, but we got no numbers.
Well, would you want to either have zero? You're having zero on this property.
Well, we don't know what he's gonna do with the property.
You're having zero right now on this property, are you?
I don't know.
No, no one owns it, so you're having zero. You're at least generating some income, Ernie, please, come on.
Okay, so if somebody could buy a property and put a cat house on it, that's income.
You have to make that...
Come on, I mean, you guys gotta be more specific.
Let's think about this knowledgefully. If someone's gonna put a cat house on a property, as long as we're paying taxes...
It's okay with you guys? Okay, so you guys are also...
I really don't care, as long as someone's buying property...
I'm glad you told the public that you guys are immoral as well.
All right, thank you, Ernie.
Ernie, here's the resolution.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments on agenda items? Please do.
I'm Mo Gallus, a former Monessin resident. A Monessin business person. While Ernie had you on page three, Pino, are you here? Is that, is Pino here? Okay, he's in the back? Oh, okay. Well, while you're on page three, on page three, I'm just reading last month, I wasn't here, but you accused the mayor of being a liar and having a fake newspaper.
Wait a second, that's not on the agenda here.
What's that? He has the minutes, he's talking about the newspaper.
It's in the minutes, it's on page three.
Okay.
I don't know.
Minutes, all right, no problem.
Pino's comments last month.
Okay.
He comes out and says you're a liar and the newspaper is fake. Well, I'm here for the newspaper, and if you got anything fake about it, let me know right here to my face right now. Speak up.
I'll tell you what. If you wanted me to tell you to your face...
Yeah, come on.
...he's left before.
That's good.
Your newspaper is not bringing what's going on in here, hearing, or not, you're just ignoring the hell out of it.
You're lying.
What, how am I lying? How am I lying?
Let's maintain order. Let's maintain order. Come on, let's maintain order. Stop, stop it now. Stop it now.
Go on the record, he don't have an example. He's just all mouth.
You can't give me an example. Can you give me an example? Only one time. Every month, every month, they never follow it up, they never follow this one on you, so they never, they don't tell you, it's fake.
Come on, let's back it, back it down, back it down, back it down.
Okay. I don't wanna fire him up, I just want, you know, I'll call you out.
I understand.
And you didn't, you didn't, you didn't say anything, you didn't say anything of any value.
Hey.
No, you're a fake. You're a fake and you're a liar. You're a fake and you're a liar.
No, I'm not lying.
One at a time.
You want the mic, you can have it next. It's all yours.
Listen, I don't need the mic to talk to you. Yeah, yeah, I'm here. I just told you.
Okay, let's get, let's get control of this again. Hey. Both, both of you can, can leave the building at this point. Either sit down and follow the decorum, hey, come on, let's stop it, let's stop it. We'll either follow the decorum, or you'll both be asked to leave the meeting. Is there any questions about the agenda? Ernie, nothing? Does anybody have any correspondence they'd like to talk about?
No, mayor.
At this point, I'd like to ask the solicitor for his comment. No, you do not have the floor, be quiet, I'll give you the floor when, no, 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 no. I'm sorry. Be, be quiet, you wait your time.
Why did he get to talk before the agenda? Go ahead.
I do have an agenda item. Delmar Heppel, eighteen twenty-one service lane. On that nine, two thousand and nineteen that Ernie brought up, in exhibit two, before you vote on it, can somebody just tell me the three items that is on it? Is it Fire Department, Civic Center, and what was the other one? Was there another one?
The roads.
The roads. That's what's on it?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Okay. Solicitor, will you please give us your report?
Thank you, mayor. All I have for this evening is the demo hearings for November ninth, beginning at five thirty, are all put together, together. Notifications have gone out, your city administrator has the legal ad, and your code enforcement officer has the property postings.
Thank you. City treasurer, do you have a report for us?
Yes, mayor. Mayor, council and citizens of Monessin, this is my report for September. Garbage fees revenue for September two thousand and twenty-three. Garbage fees current, September, we received three thousand one hundred dollars, year to date, three hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Budget amount, three hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Delinquent, September, we received six thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. Year to date, forty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Budget amount, eighty thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. Amount collected by Portnoy, September, four thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-five cents. And also, a total year to date, eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-nine cents, which is included in the delinquent above what I just read. Penalty and interest from Portnoy, September, received two hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Year to date, two thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Budget amount, two thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. Garbage collected for two thousand and twenty-four, September, received twenty-five dollars, year to date, one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Budget amount, one thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Total for September, nine thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Year to date, three hundred and ninety-four thousand nine hundred and five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Total budget amount for two thousand and twenty-three, four hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. City real estate taxes, current, September, we received seven thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents. Year to date, one million nine hundred and seventy-four thousand eight dollars and thirty-six cents. Budget amount, two million thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Fire years collected by the city, received nothing in September, year to date, eight thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty cents. Budget amount, five thousand five hundred and three dollars. Subtotal year to date, real estate taxes, one million nine hundred and eighty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Delinquent city taxes, collected by Westmoreland Tax Claim Bureau, we received nothing in September, year to date, one hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Budget amount, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Total year to date taxes, two million one hundred and forty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ten cents. Distribution as follows, as of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Year to date, the general fund received one million three hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Debt service received, three hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-three cents. Library fund received, forty thousand seven hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. Park received, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents. For total year to date, one million nine hundred and eighty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. The budget amount was, is as follows for two thousand and twenty-three. General fund is one million four hundred thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Debt service, budget amount, three hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and nine cents. Library, budget amount, forty thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Parks, one hundred and ninety-one thousand two, nine hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents, ninety cents. Total budget amount for two thousand and twenty-three is two million thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Miscellaneous income, real estate transfer tax, we received in September, four thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Year to date, forty-eight thousand forty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Budget amount is eighty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Earned income tax, September, eighty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Year to date, five hundred and forty-six thousand five dollars and seventy-three cents. Budget amount, five hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Mercantile tax, September, received four hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Year to date, eighteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Budget amount, twenty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Local service tax, September, we received two thousand three hundred and ten dollars and seventy cents. Year to date, fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. Budget amount, fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Tax certification, September, we received six hundred and forty dollars. Year to date, seventeen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Budget amount, twenty-one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Municipal lien letters, September, we received nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Year to date, twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. Budget amount, fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Line usage account, unsecured payments, we received fifty dollars. Year to date, ten thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars. Line usage fees, September, seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and ten cents. Year to date, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-five cents. For total year to date of six hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Mayor, that concludes my report for the month of September.
Motion to accept a treasurer's report for garbage fees and city real estate tax collected for the month of September two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask our city controller, she has a report?
Yes, mayor. The general fund shall lay federal savings bank checking account, bank reconciliation as of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. The beginning bank balance as of August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three was seven hundred and forty thousand six hundred dollars and sixty-seven cents. Deposits made, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and four cents. Expenses, two hundred and sixty-five thousand twenty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. The ending balance as of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three was eight hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Outstanding checks, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-three cents. There are no outstanding deposits. Reconciliation to the bank statement, five hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I'm gonna just be very brief tonight. First off, we will have a town hall meeting on October nineteenth, at six P.M. Anybody that's interested in the town hall meeting is more than welcome to come. We're also interested in hearing any ideas. You can give me a call during the week about what kind of subject or matter you'd like to have for that meeting. I'd like to remind everybody that because of the Halloween parade that we're gonna have on the fourth Thursday of this month, we're gonna have city council on the Wednesday preceding that. It'll be on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. So mark that on your calendars. There will be no city council meeting on the normal Thursday we have it, it will be on the pre, the day before, the Wednesday.
We have to advertise that.
It will get advertised, yes.
Okay. We have to make a motion to advertise.
We did.
We did.
We did last.
At the last.
Other than that, just a couple of little things. First off, the city administrator and myself had a very wonderful meeting with Senator Ward and Representative De Vanzo. I think that there's some good things coming for the city as, as a result of that, and time will tell. Above and beyond that, there's no clock here, I'm not gonna do the clock anymore, much, but I am going to enforce something else, though. There will be no comments at the end of the thing, it's not gonna be on any subject. It will be only on items that council can act upon, that were related to. We're not gonna talk about the school, we're not gonna talk about the redevelopment authority, we're not gonna talk about Nehemiah, we're not gonna talk about businesses, we're not gonna talk about any of those things. Newspaper or anything else is going to be on things that council can act upon, and that's the extent of that. With that, I don't have my proclamation here.
I have it.
I do have a proclamation that I read at the, the library banquet that they had here earlier this week. I'm gonna read it again. Whereas the Friends of the Monessin Public Library raise money that enables the library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for our children's activity, and, and special events throughout the year. Whereas the work of the Friends highlights and on an ongoing basis, the fact that our library is a cornerstone of our community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present, in the worlds of literary, and in the words of literary advocate Andrew Carnegie, a library outranks any one thing a community can do to benefit its people. Whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets resources it needs to provide the wide variety of services of, of all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisories, and children's services. Whereas the Friends gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now, now therefore, I, Ron Moser, mayor of the city of Monessin, do hereby proclaim October fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, as Friends of the Library Week in Monessin, Pennsylvania. And I urge everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them all, for all that they do, and make our library and community so much better. In witness thereof, I have sent my hand and caused the seal of Monessin to be affixed to this tenth day of October, two thousand and twenty-three. At this point, I'd like somebody to read some of these motions that we have here.
We'd like to make a motion to release parcel number twenty dash zero two dash zero six dash zero dash one seventy-four, Knox Avenue in the city of Monessin, from the Westmoreland County Property Repository to the high bidder on a property made by Allen Dell Mall in an amount of five hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd just like to make just one little quick comment here. There is no way that we can deny any property being sold to anybody for, fair housing laws will require that to happen, for one, for two. If we did nothing at all, it would automatically be sold to them. So all we did was just speed it up a little bit. Call the roll, please.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Motion to develop the civil service promotional test requirements and procedures for the Monessin Police Force for utilization prior to January first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second, mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Mayor, before she reads this next one, I would like to consider it being, getting tabled to next meeting. I'm sorry. I said I would like to have E. tabled until next meeting.
The only concern I would have with that is this is a contractor payment that is, is pretty much assured to them that we would process these in a timely fashion.
I appreciate that, but if you're in my names going on this and council's approving it, I wanna read it before I do it.
You've had it for...
No, I didn't have it.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor.
Is that a motion to table?
Is that a motion?
Motion to table E.
Is there a second?
Second, mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution Number eleven of two thousand and twenty-three of the city of Monessin, county of Westmoreland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. A resolution of the city council of the city of Monessin approving the program modification to the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program. The resolution is attached to this agenda as exhibit two.
Is there a second?
Second, mayor.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. Councilman Chakowski, it's your turn.
Thank you, mayor. Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty cents. All invoices are attached to Agenda's attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the recreational account in the amount of five hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-five cents. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoice from the parks fund in the amount of one thousand eighty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Motion to transfer sixty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents from the general fund to the payroll account fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Make a motion to transfer three thousand three hundred from the general account to the healthcare account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoice from the refuge account in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five dollars. The invoices attached to this Agenda's attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoice from the liquid fuels account in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and six dollars and one cent. twelve thousand, four hundred and six dollars and one cent. All invoices are attached to this Agenda's Attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Norchikowski?
Yes.
Counselor Minister?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoice from the Line Usage Fund in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-one cents. All invoices are attached to the Agenda's Attachment F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselor Minister?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Norchikowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
And the balances for this so far at the end as of tonight, American Rescue Fund has two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and two cents. The Grant Fund has fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Line Usage has seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents. Debt Service has one million, ninety thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. The General Account has four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Liquid Fuels has a hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. Refuge has a hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and fourteen cents. Fire Escrow has twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-four cents. Healthcare has five thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-five cents. Parks is forty-nine thousand, three dollars and seventy-four cents. Payroll has three thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. And the Rec Fund has three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and three cents. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Councilwoman Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, I'd like to just defer my report into the next council meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Minister, it's your turn.
Thank you, honorable mayor, members of council, administrative staff, citizens of Mennessean. I will go ahead and refrain from my reports until Wednesday. What date is that?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. There we go. Thank you, Mayor. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Gregor is not here. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on items relating to the business, responsibility, statutes, codes, and ordinance of the City of Mennessean.
Who was responsible to form the Mennessean Nehemiah Community Development Corporation? Did anybody here?
That was a concept that I promoted, yes.
So it was just you? Nobody else on council did this?
And I'm not part of that committee anymore. I'm not part of that Nehemiah group.
You're not?
I am not.
Okay, then why was this letter soliciting businesses to come to the meeting on the eighteenth using the letterhead of Mennessean and it went through the meter of Mennessean taxpayers?
No.
Okay, so what was that all about? I gave it to her. They used Mennessean letterhead and this thing. And he sent it to all his friends in that Nehemiah group. Okay? I'm gonna tell you guys, you cannot assume the authority are good, honest people. That's what I'm gonna tell you. That's why I stand up here all the time.
Ernie, settle down. Settle down, Ernie. Settle down. We will not demigrate anybody.
You did something that is illegal.
No, no, Ernie. It was sent on Nehemiah stationary, not citizens.
And you used the letterhead of Mennessean envelope and the meter went through the Mennessean taxpayers' money. So don't give me none of this bullshit. That's all you guys do. You know how to twist things. So the people, the little people with the little brains, take your dirty work job.
Okay, settle down. Settle down.
Okay, that's something else.
Wait a minute. Whoa, can you wait?
Yeah, go ahead.
Does anybody know anything about this?
Yes, we sent out a letter to have a meeting to form a merchants association within the City of Mennessean.
Yeah, just one person.
Hold on. Who's "we"?
The Nehemiah group and...
Okay. So, two questions I have then is why is the address of the city hall on here? And two, was this our postage?
Yes, it is.
Because it's quadrants are who we do our postage with.
The City of Mennessean is definitely promoting the merchants association.
The council didn't vote on it.
Mennessean doesn't send out flyers without council's approval.
That's right.
I don't care who they are. Did this come out as... I, this is the first time I've seen this. I don't know anything about it.
It came out exactly as you're saying there, absolutely. Yes, to promote merchants association within the City of Mennessean.
That's a particular religious group.
No, no, it's promoting the merchants association with them, Ernie, as part and a conduit.
They incorporated? How they incorporated?
They are working on their...
They're working to be incorporated, so we're using taxpayers' money to support them.
On a 501(c)(3) status.
They don't have it.
They don't have it, yes.
That's right. So they don't have it, but yeah, we're gonna fund them.
Nobody's funding them.
We're not funding it.
No, who the hell has a letterhead in the staff?
Hey, Ernie.
Settle down.
Ernie, calm down, and let's ask questions.
Now, the funding we're seeing here is to promote the Merchants and Businesses Association, not to promote the Nehemiah.
But them as a...
But they're the keystone, and they're not even incorporated yet.
Yeah, it does say Nehemiah. Well, it is, but it's all the past.
Right.
But I don't know who, how this got authorized.
The mayor, the dictator.
Ernie, calm down. There it is. It is on there. The Nehemiah Community Development, of course, as before. I, when did this go out?
I got it last week. You know, it's in my newspaper.
It's wrong, buddy. It's wrong. I don't know what to say.
I'll read it.
What, how...
Does our solicitor have an opinion?
I mean, how did it... We can't use city, we can't use city postage to send out something for this that has nothing to do with city business.
And they're not even incorporated.
Ernie, we can't do that at all, never.
So to promote a merchants association is...
Well, for one thing, it would have to be council's approval to even do it.
That's right.
Okay. What was the cost involved in this?
They don't know.
Somebody has to know.
Well, yeah, it's in the postage meter, so that was the only cost.
How many of these were sent out?
Over a hundred, I heard.
There's more than a hundred, Ernie. Maybe two-twenty.
Two-twenty? Wow.
Two-twenty times sixty cents, plus the invoice.
Do you handpick those that you send them to?
Yes.
Sorry.
No, but did you say, do we know who we sent?
No, handpicked.
No, no, no. We sent it to a list of merchants that we have here in the city.
There ain't no two-hundred-and-twenty merchants in this city.
Ernie, let me make this comment to you, and I'll say this.
You made a statement.
I, I will reimburse out of my pocket the amount of the postage.
No, you should. The mayor should.
I didn't have any...
And we'll cancel the merchants association meeting for the eighteenth. I will pay that out of my pocket.
I'm not asking you to pay.
That satisfies council. Then if we have to come back and make a motion not to pass this, that's fine. But I will do that right now, tomorrow. And we'll cancel the meeting for the eighteenth. Thank you.
That's not what I want.
Thank you. All right, how about we will look into it further?
Good. Yeah, but make sure they're incorporated. You don't got a back-up group that's loosely confederated for two years.
Wait, whoa, 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 whoa. Hold on. I'm reimbursing the city tomorrow for the cost of the...
We're talking the legal formation of this group.
Do you hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's another matter.
Thank you. Thank you, Ernie.
Anything else you'd like to say?
Yeah, yeah. How comes the cleaning machines of Mennessean that sweeps the streets, why was he going backwards? You weren't aware of that? He was cleaning the streets backwards. Were you aware of that?
I was not aware of that.
Is it there... He might have been unclogging one of the brushes.
No, I found that the one...
Are you sure it was the city street sweeper and not the coke plant?
No, what would a coke plant got to do with it? But anyway, this is...
They operated a street sweeper too.
Coke plant cleans up downtown, too.
Okay, but anyway, I heard that the one brush on the one side doesn't work. So he had to go backwards to get the other side of the street. So if that's the case, why do we have a machine that's not fully functional working on the street?
I was not aware that that was a problem.
Can't fix, Ernie, if they don't tell us they need a brush fixed, because Rodney's pretty up to date on letting us know when something's wrong. So if there's a brush that's not fixed, he will let us know. He's pretty good about letting us know when we need things.
Well, the people gotta look into this, because everybody's running this city as if it's their little pet peeve.
Was this downtown, Ernie?
Yeah.
Then it's probably a coke plant.
No.
He's pretty good about asking for brushes or things to be fixed.
Coke plant goes up there too sometimes.
I don't know. But anyway, I have one more simple question. The treasurer, the controller, and also, if you give us numbers, can you at least tell us, how do you compare the last year at this time? Are we below the surface, about par, or are we above? Because you guys just throw out numbers. What's that? I think people fall asleep, like we're in a church pew, and everybody just dazes when the preacher's talking about, you know, the glory of God. So tell me, where are we as far as compared to last year? Do you have some idea? That's all, I just want some idea.
It's very, very similar. Very similar.
Wait a minute, let them answer. You don't got their books. You didn't do the mathematics, they did the reports. I don't got, you guys carry water for each other just to cover your butts.
Okay, settle down.
Do you have some idea? Because the other two look like they don't got no answers.
We're not at the same place we were last year.
Yeah, we're below.
A little bit.
Okay.
But there's reasons for that.
Yeah, I know that, but you gotta make sure the public knows it, because when they come off here, they think everything is hunky-dory. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Pino. Forty-five Montraver, on five oh six two. I got a question first to you. You hand me a paper for the garbage authority, see if we could help.
Yes.
And I think you basically lied to me and you lied to anybody else that was here, because what I said at the meeting, if you look and you do your minutes, is I would do that job, the both, the code enforcement job, and he's assisting for free. I don't want their job, but that is their job. What you want us to do, that is their job. Not my job. I don't look for, I'm retired, remember?
All right, just say no then.
One more thing. You know, if you wanted to know, when do you guys, when do we told a lie? Well, this gentleman over here wrote a letter, you guys never printed. Okay?
We're not gonna talk about the newspaper.
Every meeting that we...
Excuse me. Excuse me, we're not gonna talk about the newspaper.
Let me finish.
Because that is not anything we have any control over.
Well, how the hell, let me ask you a question.
You left off starting.
Well, he talked about it as part of the...
How did you let him talk? Let me finish. How did you let him talk without any reason for him to talk on your agenda of today?
I did try to stop it, first off.
Oh, that's right. He's one of your friends. He's one of the guys that like the fake news.
Secondly, he pointed out that that was in the meeting minutes, and that was part of the council business.
You're full baloney, and you know you're full of baloney. The whole bottom line is this.
Listen, come on.
I like to have a newspaper that print the truth every time after a meeting.
We're not gonna continue this.
Not to be, not to be...
Hey, we're not gonna continue this. We are not going to continue this.
Pino, all right, I'm jumping in on this.
Good.
Okay. We hear the same shitting thing every two weeks about the same problems that have ninety-nine percent that have anything to do with this council, okay? This council and people in this council bust their ass for the City of Mennessean and their employees. Oh, you can do all you want, okay?
That's a joke.
I'm glad you, it's a joke. Then run for office. I've just about had it with every...
Hey, no, wait, wait, he's got the...
I got the floor. If you wanna talk afterwards, you can knock yourself up. So you know what? I don't wanna hear it, okay?
I don't wanna hear you.
Well, then, there's a door. Don't let it hit you in the rear end.
Don't be smart.
No, I'm not gonna be smart. I'm being direct. I'm being direct, because I'm tired of, for what we put in and what we bust our butts for, for what? To get ripped every two weeks for something that doesn't make sense, that we can't control?
No, that's untrue. We, the public presents...
The public can present anything it wants.
You can talk, let me talk.
No. When you come up to the podium, when you come up to the podium, you can talk, you understand? If there's a problem with that, if there's a problem with that, oh, well. You wait till you come up. Pino's talking.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking. No, I don't like to walk by. You know, this is America. This is United States of America.
Yes, all First Amendment.
That's right. And I went under that flag. I served this country. I don't know whether you did or not. All I'm saying, all I'm saying, all I'm saying, all I'm saying to you...
I'm not going to ask right here.
What?
Stop it.
You know what? I'm gonna say something. If somebody doesn't mind, I'd like to speak right now, please. Can I please say something right now? Yeah, please. You know, I've, you know, I've been sitting here, I know you guys know I'm a Christian, and it has nothing to do with me being on council, but there's a verse that says to be slow, put the listen, okay? It says to be slow to speak and be slow to rap. So I've sat here over the course, I had to write this, because I wanted to make sure I said things that were right and decent and in order. So I've sat here over the course of the last few meetings, the last few months, being quick to listen. I sit here and I listen to comments, to non-agenda items, and that's fine at our council meetings. I'm slow to comment on anything that was said in the portion of the meeting, and I was slow to rap, because I could have easily been angered by what was said to people and about people, even though the comments sometimes were out of order. But there is a time to be silent, but there's also a time to speak. And I want to speak tonight. There are probably some of you in here today, let me finish mine. There are probably some of you in here today, let me finish mine, I often don't say anything, let me finish mine, please.
No, I gave her the floor.
I always listen.
Okay, I have the floor.
Okay, but this is getting out of control, okay? But there may be some of you, I'm not going to be long, Pino. There may be some of you in here today who may not agree with what I'm about to say and that's fine. But I truly feel that if we come together as one, which it doesn't seem like too many people want to be one with suggestions and solutions to problems and support and encourage one another instead of being a part of the problem and putting one another down, we as a community can continue to try to move Manassas forward. Maybe not as quickly as you I would like, but we can try to move it forward. We didn't get this way overnight, believe me, and it's not going to change overnight. It's going to take a lot of time, energy and effort from all of us. The council, the residents of the city that are committed to doing the best to see that Manassas turns around for the good. We, city council, mayor, the city administrator, employees, we can't do it alone, we just can't. But we need all of you, I mean, every single person living in Manassas to do what he or she can. Whether you're a man, a woman, boy or girl, we need to donate our time, our energy and effort for the good of Manassas. All this infighting, all this bickering, this name-calling, finger-pointing, all we do is, is going to spread like cancer that it already is. And we know cancer is deadly and it's very debilitating and that's what's happening to the city. Individually as a whole, we need to make a commitment today to stop all this and come together as one. For there's something that, there's an old adage that goes, united we stand and divided we'll fall. If we don't unite and come together as one and stop all this fighting and negativity in a city, we are going to fall. It has to stop. This has been happening over the last couple of months and it seems like you, the more fire and you're putting gas on fire and it seems you want it to be erupting all over the city. Come with something, with solutions, with, with things that will help us to do things that are right. I'm willing to listen, most of us are willing to listen. We don't have to agree on everything, we don't even have to like each other. But we can work together for Manassas.
I agree with you.
I do too, Pino.
Thank you.
I do too, Pino. I, I, I believe in what you're saying, I'm with a lot of things that you say, but we can't do it this way.
Let me, let me, let me tell you.
Okay, go ahead.
Been here for two and a half years, right? Okay, and the newspaper has not said one bad thing about Manassas in general.
It's not going to go there, we're not going to go there.
Doesn't make any difference, I'm going to say what I got to say.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting, we can continue these discussions next time.
If that's how you want to work together without listening, if you don't want to listen, then what can I tell you?
I think, I think the thing, I think what they want, I agree, I agree.
Sometimes you have to go there to explain at least why there's such a division, okay? And unless you listen, it ain't going to change.
But you said the same thing for the last six months.
What is the same thing?
That you're complaining about something we don't have control over.
Then nobody complained about, the newspapers, I don't even mention them because it's a fake newspaper, I said that before, I say now unless,
You said that last month.
Unless they do, unless they do, a newspaper reports the truth.
We have no control over the newspaper.
But, oh, that's right, you're going to listen.
This is not going to be a public debate, it's just not. That's not the purpose of public comment here. What everybody up here at council is saying, bring things that the city can control. And you're not.
Alright, let me, let me finish, then I want to go back to her.
Quickly, please, there's other people that are like, would like to speak. You just heard me, Mr. Harhi, there's other people that would like to speak.
That's true.
But can we do this with some order? Because there's no order in these meetings anymore. This is not useful.
Okay, now, being that, you said that for the last several months, we've been talking about things that are not together.
No, what I'm saying is we're coming with a lot of negativity. We're going to need to come with ideas and suggestions that will help us to do better and, and do good for the city of Manassas.
How can you do that when you got the three stooges working with you and the other people that are in it?
Thank you so much, Pino, I think we're going to let the next person come up and speak. We value your time and thank you.
Listen, the one thing that I can say is, if that's how you're going to run your meeting by just getting people off, full of baloney.
You're ruining it for everybody else that's trying to get to voting.
Well, I'm going to answer a question.
You've been up here for ten minutes repeating yourself.
She talked for, you keep saying.
She's council, she can talk as long as she wants.
If we need to work together, we need to work together.
Come on, please, please give it a break.
You have an individual behind you.
There has not been any solution, okay? Your guys' solution comes from the same people that brought this damn town down.
Solutions.
The same people that brought the town down, you guys still keep going back to them. You know, that's all I can tell you, so, you can do whatever you want to do. I agree on you, I allow you to do whatever you want to say and speak to me the way you want to. That's fine, that's your American right to.
Please sit down.
I don't need you lying to me.
Please sit down.
Guys, listen, this, the council's going to make a motion to adjourn this meeting and defer comment to the next meeting, right? Can we please keep some order here? And they're permitted to do that. And if it happens next meeting, they could keep defer and comment on non-agenda items into affinity. So can we have some decorum tonight, please?
Thank you.
Brett LaPresty, 28 Montraver. I was just riding through town, so I wanted to come to this meeting because them buildings are still, the ones still standing and all that rubbish is still sitting there.
The contract's been issued for those, they have, they have a total of ninety days to complete the project. As I understand it, they are supposed to be here next week to start demoing those two buildings.
I figured it was in the insurance company's hands, not you guys, I just wanted to know what was going on. Oh, none, none of them.
His county is doing, county, county's doing.
That's why I took some, right?
I thought the insurance was holding them up.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Ted R I, 344 Helen, I don't know if I'm going to fall into parameters, but first thing I want to address is, I want to correct Orzakowski when he has stated in the last meeting that Lou Mavrekas did not appoint himself to the redevelopment authority in Mo's newspaper. Now, Vrekas then appointed himself to fill Orzakowski's seat.
And there's nothing that can be done to change that, so it's a past history.
Well, no, 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 wait. You have to look at the past so you don't make the same mistake for future. And we have been making this mistake since two thousand and seventeen with Mavrekas.
I promise you, I will not nominate myself to the redevelopment authority.
But at any rate, he could, I would still like to see him removed because he shouldn't be there. And the other thing is, it's actually not your fault, it's Matt Chorall's fault because as soon as he got in, he had the ability to get legal counsel to have Mavrekas removed. So it's his fault.
Possibly.
Period. And now we suffer because Mavrekas is on the redevelopment authority and does things without council's approval.
And redevelopment authority is not our control right now.
Is under your control right now?
It is not.
Why not?
Because they are an authority, they are.
Who appoints, who appoints the authority?
Council does.
Thank you. I rest my case on that one. There seems to be some disparity among people that I have done nothing for the city of Manassas. And I put together a thing, I went around and got some information.
Let me, let me, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm not, I'll start with the boat launch that I acquired one million dollars for where we do, whatever we do at the river launch, the Herman Mahalich River Launch. That was the first thing. The funny thing about that, though, I got to make a quick comment, was I said that it would be great if we got a restaurant or something down there and of course I was laughed at and the whole nine yards, I think if you look down there, you see a very nice restaurant. But the docking facility, the whole thing was one million dollars. East Gate War Memorial, we did a rehabilitation, I don't know what the cost of that was. It's right across from the Rite Aid. That's one of the few things that you did right was cut those trees off of the seven people that were killed in the shuttle accident. We had no salts yet, we had salt.
Let me, let me make a couple of comments here real quick before you go too far. All your meeting minutes, every meeting, every meeting you had is currently online on thecityofmanassas.com. Nowhere in there does it talk about the boat launch in the meeting minutes when you were mayor.
I was a state representative.
I'm sorry, but it does not say that you were mayor and you did anything with the boat launch. There's nothing in the meeting minutes at all.
I was a state representative that acquired one million dollars for that boat launch and I'm not even sure who, who the mayor was at that point. But I know that I had a lot to do with that because there was two hundred thousand dollars allocated by Herman Mahalich, he passed away. I was voted in, I kept the two hundred thousand, added eight hundred thousand, got help from State Senator Jay Barry Stout and we got the boat launch done. They used to do, now that was done, am I correct or not, Mike?
Lot of help though from the senate.
That's right. Okay, so as I said, you worked for a senator, so you understand what the program was. We acquired that money and I wanted to get a restaurant down there and they laughed at me. A restaurant down at that end of town, blah, 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 and, and it worked.
What does this have to do with?
I'm just saying that you're talking about, let's work in unity, we don't.
But what does this, what do you complain?
Give us an example, give us an example of something we can do right now.
I don't want that to boy, I don't want Nester chasing me around all the social organizations that he had to be suspended for because of the fact that everybody wanted me off the refuse authority and you guys did the song and dance on that one too. Not what I'm talking about. Rite Aid came to town, took a whole square block. That improved the East Gate section part of the town. Public Safety Building, one million dollars I got acquired, Mayor Joe Smith was the mayor. The library, one million dollars to refurbish the entire library.
That was bond money.
No, it was one million dollars plus their bond money, I matched what they had to refurbish it. Fred, you, I think you were president of the, were you working or not working or thing? Okay.
What does this have to do?
This is where we were, this is what I did.
We don't care what happened in the past.
Well, you have to find out what happened in the past. You have a food store here that's twenty-three years now because I worked to bring that thing to town and they didn't want it.
Do you want a proclamation?
I don't want anything from you, I want nothing from you.
Then why are you telling all us this?
Because people said that I did nothing, you have your, you have your non-transparent.
Nobody has said that.
Nobody said up here about anything about you.
You go on Facebook, the guy that kind of, I'll say represents you in the, behind the scenes, I did nothing for Manassas, I do nothing for Manassas.
Is that on a public forum?
Uh, yeah, it's actually, it's on there.
Go address it there.
You can probably turn around and say that.
Anyway, the Douglas Education Center, five hundred thousand dollar grant. I don't do Facebook, I, I, people bring it up to me and show me what these people say about me or as one particular person.
But please don't waste council's time trying to expound on what you did, okay? If you did, I can congratulate you then.
Why can't you do the same things then? I got a million dollar railroad job, I'm sorry?
We're not state representative.
Well, I did that also, working with unity in the city until Mavrekas got in.
Everything's on the minute, so we can see exactly what you do.
And then we got the stadium done, nineteen thirty-seven WPA project, never had hot water, we had that redone, I imagine. Seven years, one hundred twenty-three thousand distressed school funding to the city of Manassas.
I would like to point out a couple of things, first off, one of the things that you did point out in your thing was Linden Park. You had a couple of different programs that you ran that were pretty good. One was you identified the Linden Park as an area that had a high school and a surrounding community that was at risk.
Linden School?
Linden School.
On Ross River?
Yes. And you made, you made the comment that you would have developers come in and build houses there. Twenty-five years later, we don't have houses there, but we have somebody that's wanting to build houses now. And yet you're going after them, I don't understand that.
No, 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 different, different housing, number one. Number two, go up to the old junior high school lot, and see the twelve homes, first time home buyer, that's what you want to build. Are they nice homes? Are they nice homes, answer.
They are, they do not follow the current code, they are an example.
I'm not here for the current code, that's seven, ten years ago. We went to Jeanette, we saw what they had, we brought that housing to Manassas and it worked.
County Housing is building more housing, County Housing is going to build five more homes this year.
Okay, one more time.
We tried to expand.
What does this have to do with?
All you have to do is go to the.
I just want to say one thing, everybody at your own council lived in Manassas. You didn't, you don't know the history of Manassas, Mr. Orkowski.
What difference does that make?
Well, Moser doesn't either.
Ross, you're a city councilman, you should know your city.
Let me, I'll finish quickly.
Please do.
All you talk about is sewage, what is council doing, don't answer, rhetorical. I got a sewer line upgrade, five point one million to try to get Lou Mavrekas off of his butt because in two thousand and fourteen, he refused to do the federal mandate. And they didn't do it, they didn't do it. Now we're working on it in two thousand and twenty-three.
Yep.
Okay, it should have been done in two thousand and seventeen.
Should have been in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand.
No, well, I'm just talking about when I got the money to try to get him to move a little bit and then he worked to get.
I can't, my time machine doesn't work.
Okay, we got thirty million for the Shaller-Mannassas Bridge too. And the last project, well, let me mention this one, funded additional bay up to the number two fire station, which you guys aren't, you should have done the LSA grant and I don't buy what you said for that, that's not true. And there's the housing I had, and this last project, I was out of office, we put on a twelve-year plan, they moved up to the four-year plan and it started in twenty twenty, they did all of Donner Avenue, all the way out, I think, five point eight million dollars. Nobody said a word, nobody said a word about it.
None of those things were done.
Now, that's what you can do when you work with it. You don't do LSA, did you make a deal with Kim Ward and DeBanto that we get a woo-ah moment and we're going to get a big R cap fund or something like that?
Absolutely, I'm working with Senator Ward and DeBanto to do that.
We're going to accumulate all this money and look good.
And try to rebuild this city, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, I don't buy it.
I would point out that you did not do an audit that I can find for ninety-eight or ninety-nine and in two thousand and one, you ran a two and a quarter million dollar deficit.
Well, one thing you said, we don't go back and Orzakowski.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're so, such a wonderful.
Nineteen ninety-eight letter that you told Linda and several other people that I got the light removed down on Fifth Street. Ask Jerry Saxon when that light, light was removed on Fifth Street, that you blame me for with three other people. Jerry, what, what year was that light removed?
I approximately what you said.
Just a chicken blank little thing like that, that's why I came here. I did stuff for the city of Manassas, millions and billions of dollars of help. And I, I got that store and then that's when you, when I first saw you, you had a deer in the headlights look, every time you see me, you scoot out of there real quick. Don't tell me about working in unity, being fair, being transparent, you guys are not transparent, none of you. Not from the time that they got the first guy into council and they recruited Lowe's running on August first of eighteen. So you can pray all you want, say all you want, it's not true.
Now, I have something to say about that.
It's not true.
I have something to say about that, no one recruited me, God recruited me, whether you want to hear it or not. I'm going to say, I was sitting in my office at my job and God told me, I looked at the newspaper on a day of the deadline and he told me to go ahead and run for this appointment for the city council. I love Manassas, I was born and raised in Manassas, you can say what you want to say, all of you can say what you want to say, but I know who my, my God is and I know what God told me to do. So you can spread your rumors all you want, because I heard about those rumors. But I didn't say a thing about the rumors because I knew how and why I did what I did.
Your last story was the Bible opened up and said, run for city council. I hope in the Bible.
No, the Lord, no, the Lord told me, now, whether you believe that the Lord will put it in your spirit to do something, that's up to you, but I know God will put in your spirit and tell you what to do, so whether you like it or not, that's fine with me. I know what God told me to do. You guys can talk negative about God all you want, I don't say a thing about what you believe in, so please don't say anything about what I believe in. Thank you very much. I don't say a thing about your beliefs, don't say anything about my beliefs.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Edelfever, Keystone Drive, nineteen Keystone Drive. I don't think God should be brought into a secular council meeting.
Let me, let me make a comment about that if you don't mind, just real quick. What's the very first thing that happens in the senate in Washington DC every single day?
That doesn't mean I agree with that.
Maybe not, but they say a prayer. What's the very first thing they, they do in the House of Representatives every single day before they do anything else?
They get a qualified person in favor of it.
They say a prayer. What do they do at the Supreme Court every single day before they hear anything? They say a prayer. Now, when I decided I wanted to do prayer in city council, I did a little bit of research on this. And first off, there's two, two court cases that erupted from this. One was in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, their other was in New York's, in New York, upstate New York. And what actually happened is they went all the way through the Supreme Court of each state and it went to the Supreme Court of the federal government. The Supreme Court said, there is a separation between church and state.
Exactly.
But there is not a separation between God and state, as is evident by the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The Constitution says separation of church and state.
But there is no separation between God and state, period.
No.
That's, you can argue, you'll argue that with the Supreme Court because that was their ruling.
Our founders weren't total believers in a supreme being.
I'm sorry, but that.
They created a secular government. There, there was not mentioned at the convention in seventeen eighty-seven, anything about God because I read through that, so don't tell me that.
Edelfever, may I ask you a question, please?
Certainly.
So, and I, I didn't understand it here, what's your complaint, or should I say your?
I'm not complaining.
What is it, I, what is it that's bothering you?
What I'm saying is, when I come to a secular council meeting, that's what it is. It's, it's a separation of church and state. I come here not to hear about anything about prayer or God. I come here to learn about the business that's going on in Manassas.
Okay, that's fair, alright, so if that's the case, then you are very uncomfortable with that part, okay?
No, I'm not uncomfortable.
Okay, well then perhaps you come in after that's all done, that way you don't have to exhibit. I'm just asking, I'm trying to be smart, I'm trying to.
That's a good suggestion.
Missed the whole front part of it, the pledge and everything, and you can do your own, you can do your own.
I served six years in the United States Army and my loyalty to that flag is, is here. And when I suggested about the flags in Manassas, nothing was done.
You were appointed the flag.
No, I was not, I, I, I rescind, I, I rescinded that.
You agreed to that.
Wait a minute, no, let me finish, I, I backed out of that, but I still left the idea.
Okay, no, that's fine, but you just admitted you were appointed, but you backed out.
No, I was not appointed, I was suggested to, to that.
You were suggested, but then you decided you didn't want to do it, right?
You reneged.
Yes, I did reneg. Okay, but, but, there probably was someone else who could have gone into that slot.
There's always somebody else.
Or there could have been a council member that could have followed through with that.
We wanted you.
No, no, I didn't want to do it for the council.
After you did your presentation to council on the flag and your love of it, it was beautiful and everybody said, let's get Mr. Lefebvre.
No, I, I, for personal reasons, I withdrew.
Okay, well.
But I still left the idea. One thing I just want to mention, I want to ask a mayor, do you keep in touch with the Emergency Medical Association here?
Yes, I do.
Let me ask.
Michael Spiegel.
Let me ask you this. I may be wrong here, probably am. I come to this conclusion for a couple of reasons.
You're banging on the mic.
The EMS service in Manassas seems to be inadequate, inadequate.
It's happening all over the state.
Will you let me finish, Mayor?
Yeah, let's work it together. Let, let us finish and you guys listen, he says he listens, you guys don't, why don't you let them finish? I tried, the newspaper will cover you tomorrow.
Well, let me, let me finish. I just came to a conclusion that probably isn't that firm, but I think the service is inadequate for Manassas residents and I'll tell you why. I've known for a long time, an EMS worker for Russ Draver. And I just saw him recently and he mentioned to me, Manassas EMS Service couldn't cover five calls two weekends, two weekends ago. And you know who took over? Russ Draver EMS. Yesterday, I looked out my window in the rear and Russ Draver EMS was bringing my neighbor home. And I thought to myself, why isn't that a Manassas truck? So that, that was just my observations. So let me ask you this, Mayor. Is Manassas EMS having problems financially?
I have no idea, I have no control over them.
You said you were associated, you knew about them.
I know, I know Michael Spiegel, who is responsible for Manassas Emergency Response.
Coordinator.
He's a coordinator.
Yeah, but this is all.
This is something entirely different.
And you're not interested in, like I just told you.
I do know that Manassas EMS does have a cooperative agreement with Wes Newton, with several others.
I understand that.
Several others. And there are times when they go to these other areas and take care of their patients when they have the same issue.
My wife has a lot of.
And all this stuff is available from nine-one-one services.
No, no, let me tell you about Manassas EMS Service. Over the last ten years or more, my wife has had, had occasions to be transported to various hospitals. I don't remember one Manassas truck coming, not one. I, I had one come from Brownsville, I had one come from, Russ, Russ Draver was the one that responded. And I, I should have kept track, kept track of this, but I tell you.
Just out of curiosity, not to interrupt you, but just out of curiosity, they also sent a letter out to all the residents of Manassas soliciting for subscriptions to improve the service.
I always, I always support them, but, but they don't seem to support me and my wife. And I'm a Manassas resident.
This is something you need to take up with them.
You have no influence. I thought earlier in the year, you and someone else were going down there to talk to them because Allegheny Health System sort of withdrew.
What I have done in the past and what I'll do again is I contacted nine-one-one services and I got from them a list of all the different calls that were made to nine-one-one services and who responded and what the time was it took them to respond. And I generated a report, this has been a couple of months now that I, since I've done this, that really showed that who was responding to and what the ratio was. Maybe it's time to do that again.
I'd like to see a report like that.
I will do that again.
Okay. Did you ever see, here again, you would tell me to go to EMS. Did you ever see, uh, I, here again, you would tell me to go to EMS. Did you ever see something like a profit and loss statement for that service?
It's a private business. I wouldn't have privacy of that.
Well, then you just told me you, you, you were, you knew about them. No, you, you said you had no association with them.
Well, they're still a private entity. I don't have access to their books.
You don't?
I don't.
Are you interested in that?
It's none of my business.
Well, are, are you interested?
I am interested in whether they respond or not, though. That is very much of something. And that's something I will determine through 911, not through them, but through 911.
You're looking at a resident that I can tell you they don't respond.
Do you have the records of the 911 call?
I can get those. They, they've given to me in the past. I've, I've done that in the past, and I will do that again. The next council meeting we have, I will have that. And it can be part of the discussion we have on Town Hall Meeting, which is next week.
Yeah, all three people will show up.
Let me, let me ask you, this is in relationship to, uh, council business. Back in, uh, back in July, uh, you had a, one meeting for, uh, the Community Development Block Grant. And as I recorded, that was $307,965. How much of that is remaining?
That was for 2023 money, and every penny of it is still remaining. We don't have, have access to that money yet.
From July, you don't have access?
No, we won't until spring of next year.
You don't have access for next year?
To 2023 money, we will not have access until 2024.
Do all block grants work that way?
Yes, they do.
Well, I didn't know that.
And there will be public hearings when we, when we do that as well.
Now, this isn't a criticism, but what is your view? What, this is my last statement. And I knew what your response was, because it was written in the paper. In March, it reported in the paper, this is concerning the West Warren County's local share count. And I remember reading in Montefiore Independent, you said, "I was too busy in March of 2022 with a brand-new administration." Okay, I, fine. But here would be my answer. You had a financial council member that could've done the paperwork.
Who was that?
Mr. Orzakowski.
Can you say that? I didn't know what you, I didn't hear what you said.
You think that's funny?
No.
Well, what's, what's, what's the problem?
Well, first off, back up. In January, we were broke. DCD came to me twice, not once, but twice.
I don't think that we were broke. As I recall, as I recall, it was a very good report come January.
No.
You said we were, you said we were in the positive area.
First off, we're talking about January of 2021. You have your, you're getting your years confused.
No, I'm talking about 2022.
No, 2022 was not, was when they awarded the grants for 2021 applications.
But other boroughs got the money.
Yes. Now, 2021, when it was time to do the application, I was struggling to keep this city alive.
But you had a financial council.
And we were all, everybody on council put their name on the, on the list.
When you, when a person runs for council member, then that council member is responsible, in this case, for filling out such an application.
Well, perhaps, but there was nobody to, had the time to do it, and it just didn't get done.
Thank you.
Can I say one more?
No, just one shot to their podium. One shot, come on.
Wait, wait, wait. You said 2021 you were broke. Now, you came to see my brother, and they had $400,000 in a kitty. Did you not meet with my brother John and ask him how much money they had right before you took office?
Their money was not there.
Because you told him.
Their money was not there.
You told him, "Why don't you spend the $400,000 and pay your bills?"
Mayor, motion to adjourn tonight's meeting on October 12th, 7:45 P.M.
You don't wanna hear the truth.
Is there a second?
You have trouble telling the truth.
Any, all in favor of adjourning?
Period.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned.